Good afternoon. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Let's turn some time over to our city clerk Meredith for a roll call, please.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Pat is excused this evening. Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Our invocation today, tonight, will be given by Pastor John Ramos of First Southern Baptist Church, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Walker. I'd ask everybody to stand, please.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Father God, we come before you and we are excited about the expansions that are taking place, the maintenance therein, opportunities for the Kingman community, and just to create an environment where the city can grow. Lord, I just ask that you would give your blessing upon this council, the people here. You would give them collective wisdom beyond their years, and the decisions that are made will be done to honor and glorify you from the smallest of decisions, even to the largest. And, Lord, we just ask for humility as we guide through all of these decisions, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on her future agenda. Clerk Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. We do not have anybody that is requested to address council this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number two, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I hope all of us have had an opportunity to examine items 2A through K. I would like to pull items 2C and 2D from the consent agenda. Counselors? Vice Mayor?
I'd like to pull H, I, J, and K.
Okay, okay.
I would like to pull F.
Well, good. Anything else? Okay, that narrowed it down a little bit, doesn't it? So, if we can have a motion then approving items 2A, B, E, and G on the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Item 2C and D, liquor license application, Grand Canyon Brewery Restaurant. And these both deal with the same, other similar in nature applicants. Grand Canyon Brewing Company LLC. Camila Alarcon and John Peaslee have applied for a series number 012 restaurant liquor license for a business located at 312 East Beale Street. Staff recommends approval. And the other one reads similar, except it says state microbrewery liquor license. And we're going to turn some time over to Clerk Meredith for this.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. I just needed to let you know that the Arizona Department of Liquor did send in too late to amend our agenda the revised layout maps that you have before you this evening. That is the only change. So I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to see that before you made your decision this evening.
Thank you. Then I would make a motion that we approve items C and D, approving this liquor license applications for Grand Canyon Brewery Restaurant and also microbrewery.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item F. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this because I see we have some representation from Mojave Community College, and I would like them to come up and...
Wrong item.
Wrong item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that F? F?
F is a Heidegram.
You mentioned F.
I did.
That's the white...
You meant E.
I should have read that. HDTA grants agreement with Magnet KPD. That's probably not the one you wanted to pull.
No, I...
You don't want E?
Um, no. I would like to pull F, the Kingman Industrial Park land sale.
That's E.
That's E.
That was E.
That's F on my agenda. Was that not F? Right there?
Oh, it is on your... What happened?
I am not losing my mind, I promise. It's the one you sent the other day, yes. Okay, my apologies. Do we need to amend?
Carl, how do we want to proceed on that one?
Do we need to roll back everything?
Wow, I was... I guess the easiest way to...
Microphone.
Yeah.
Would be to... Let's just call it do-over. Let's...
Okay, do-over on basically all the consent agenda.
So what I would suggest is you take action on the real F.
Yes, I agree.
And then we can talk about E, just because there was confusion?
Yep, we can do that.
My apologies.
Not a problem. So item F, HIDTA grants agreement with Magnet KPD. Can we have a motion to approve that item?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Revisiting item number E then, Kingman Industrial Park land sale. Parcel V-P-C-A was auctioned on March 16th at 3:00 PM at the minimum acceptable bid of $300,000. There is one qualified and winning bidder, Mojave Community College, and staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still excited about this item. I see that we have a representation from Mojave Community College, and I'd just like them to come forward and talk about their vision for the parcel. Some community members know about this, but I felt it was a good opportunity for them to get everybody excited about what's to come and how Mojave Community College is again contributing to our workforce development. So I would like for them to come up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Jenny Dixon. I'm the Vice President of Administrative Services for Mojave Community College. And with me tonight I have Gerald Jones, who is our Assistant Director of Facilities Maintenance Management in charge of construction. So this is going to be his project. More than three years ago, Mojave Community College started looking for an opportunity to build a facility that was specifically designed to offer workforce programs specific to the industrial arts and maintenance of manufacturing. And it has been a long three years. We have changed sites and pursued this land. And really, it is the site that was most near and dear to my heart because it brings our facility where we will train industrial management, welding, industrial and residential electrical, HVAC. They're going to pursue aviation painting in the facility, training that supports all of the facilities that currently exist in the industrial park, as well as the ability to provide training that will support new companies that may want to come in and be in Kingman and provide work for our population in Kingman. We are really excited about the opportunity to have a joint partnership where we work hand in hand with those businesses and with the city of Kingman to provide training that supports the population here, that provides new and improved opportunities for economic growth and for expansion. And we're really excited to just get going and get this up and going with an anticipated open date for the fall 2025 semester.
Thank you so much. I am so excited about this. This is going to open up a whole new opportunity for those that are not necessarily going on to a four-year degree certificate programs. It's going to be really great for our industrial parks, so I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions for Ms. Dixon and Mr. Jones? Okay. Vice Mayor, if you'd like to make a motion then.
We're good. You've already approved it, so...
Oh, that's right, we did.
So you can just move on to your next item.
Okay, you're right. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull these four items. I'm excited to see them here. I know the staff's done a lot of work on it. I'm still a little disappointed in some of the means we're using, but it's a start. I've done some research on different means, and I just think we're buying into some mean or methods that are over... I don't want to say overpriced, but until we have a full-time funding mechanism for this, I mean, we're pulling out of reserves. We need to be as frugal as we can. I had a little heartburn with it, but I'm just happy to see it moving forward.
Okay. I know Mr. Plante is here from our Streets Department. Do we need to bring him up and any questions from council? You've already... You're good?
...in the past and they've been bypassed. So yeah, I'm good. I just wanted to say I'm happy to see it moving forward. I think as stewards of the community's money, we should be watching, you know, like I said, until we have a full-time funding, you know, some of these methods are pretty expensive. But it looks like it's here, let's get it done.
Okay. Well, thank you for those comments, Counselor. Appreciate that.
Mayor, could you just briefly describe what these items were?
Actually, I was... And thank you, Carl, for bringing that up. This is pavement preservation packages. And actually, I wanted to call Jack up if Jack wouldn't mind and come and give us more information. And most importantly, for the public, I think we better have a better understanding of what this is for. I did see on all the paperwork that most of this is happening in the intersection of Western and Sycamore, if I remember right?
No, I don't remember the exact mileage of road off the top of my head. There was four different packages in there. They are all arterial collector right now pending the budgetary process and, you know, the means that we brought forward for you guys for an alternative moving into next fiscal year. So this covers... It does have Western, there's Keno, pieces of Andy Devine for just preventative maintenance. Keno has some major repair in there to correct, you know, some base failures and drainage and all kinds of things, but it's a preservation project. We do have parts of Stockton Hill, again, that's crack seal, some fog seal, preventative maintenance. We have chip seals, some of those are coming in that have a subsequent slurry or micro coming over the top of those to provide better structure, rideability, and aesthetics for the roadway. So I can go through each one of the projects if you want. There, I attached in your guys' packets, there's an attachment that breaks out the road from the bid that I provided you guys and has each section of roadway and where it begins and where it ends as well.
And with detailed cost also.
Correct.
You have that for each one. Okay?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I did appreciate the fact that you came up here because I have some questions for you as well. As well as I just wanted to let the public know that if you go into our agendas, there is a detailed list. And so if you look at each one of these packages and click on the preservation fiscal year 2324, it will tell you, it identifies each street and each project. So for those that don't know how to navigate and get around, that's... It's really, really helpful to know. So my questions, these are arterial... I'm sorry, I got an echo. I thought you were wanting to jump in. These are arterial and connector roads, most, all of these projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we won't get into the residential where we have the IGA with the county until what time?
So that, I guess, is still part of the budget. That was the...
So that's a work in progress.
Scenario we brought up to you guys in the work session and a subsequent council meeting as well. So if the funding mechanism for that is approved, then we would move the whole program forward, which includes chip seal and the residentials.
Right. So that was the purpose of my question. I wanted the public to know that although these are arterials and connector roads, we are going to be looking at, you know, hopefully council will approve the budget and we can move forward into the residential. I know everybody's very anxious about residential.
Yep.
My next question is, I saw in the contracts that the bid price was good until the end of July?
So once we get the PO locked in, then we will be okay.
Okay.
Pending that, the price of everything asphalt included moves up and down. If you look at the JOC we have with them, materials are something that get paid, you know, based on the contract. They don't set the rate as far as, okay, it's this many tons... I'm sorry, this many dollars for a ton of asphalt because those move. So we use the ADUP price index typically to justify that.
Okay. So my next question is, we have one contractor, and we have many, many, many projects. So I just want to know a timeline. It does say fiscal year 2324, but is this contractor going to be able to handle all these projects? Like, can you tell me?
Yeah, so part of the reason they were broken into different packages, we were able to get all of them together and bring them at one time, but those are kind of based in the phases that they'll be working in. So the goal is still to achieve about $5 million worth of work this fiscal year. We did a little over $1 million with Andy Devine with the wrap-up on that project, so we have another $4 million to get out of that. Those were all projects that we had proposals on before, and we went back through and reviewed them, made sure everything was good, brought those up, and that included work that we were planning this year. Even though that those are going to work into next fiscal year, we wanted to get those locked in now to try and hold some of those prices. And then we have more money that we'll be working with in the next budget that will address both the residential areas and additional arterial collectors that we need to get to.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And then, Jack, you mentioned it already, and actually, thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing all that up. Pending approval of our next budget for fiscal year '24, it is conceivable that some residential could happen later on in this year, later at the end of summer, if we get that budget approved, correct?
Yeah, pending, and I don't want to speak for the county, having preliminary conversations with them, yes.
Pending the county's approval of working with us, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be into the fall.
Great. It's all good news. So we appreciate that, Jack. Any other questions for Mr. Plante? Okay. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that. So Counselor Walker, would you like to make a motion on this since you pulled these?
I'll pass.
Okay. We will honor that. Can we have a motion then approving consent agenda items 2H, I, J, and K?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on and on our agenda, we have no old business tonight. Item number 4A, new business. Adopt of notice into intent of intent to modify water rates and set a public hearing date. The city's water rates have not been reviewed since 2008. As a result, city staff identified the need to hire Wildon Financial Services to perform a water rate study in an effort to maintain target reserves at the levels necessary to find, to fund ongoing operational and capital cost. The water rate studies results, options, and city staff's recommendations were presented to the council at a work session held on March 28th, 2023. The next step in the process is to adopt a notice of intent to modify the water rates and set a date for the public hearing. Staff recommends council adopt a notice of intent to modify water rates and set a public hearing date for June 6th, 2023. Mr. Foggan or Carl, do you need to give us any more information on this?
I would just say thank you to the council for coming to the workshop, and I would turn it over to Tina, actually our consultants here as well, to answer any questions. Was there a presentation? Similar, yeah. So, and we would like to provide kind of what the presentation was at the workshop, just so that the community gets another look at it and we answer any additional questions as we move this forward, so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foggan. And Kevin, I'm sorry, your last name again?
Burnham.
Burnham, so from Wildon Financial Services.
Correct.
Welcome.
Thanks.
And if you could give us some, actually review some of this for us.
I will. It's good to be back, so hopefully the presentation will be up here in a... All right, so it's going to be a very similar presentation to what we saw last week, just a week ago, but I did provide some additional information based on what was asked for last time. So as we're going through it, please flag me down, stop me if I'm going too fast. You have questions, whatever the case may be, so... What we wanted to go over tonight was the purpose of the rate study, the summary of our proposed revenue increases. We've got some different options on the rates that we want to share with you, and then some comparisons as well. So the purpose of the rate study, so the main objective is to make sure that the water utility is generating the revenue it needs to cover its costs, both the operational costs, O and M, chemicals, staff time, as well as the capital side of the house, making sure that you're maintaining the system, repairing the water mains, taking care of everything there. Within that, we've got some minimum reserve level requirements that we need to meet. They're prudent industry financial standards. We'll get into that in a little bit. And then we want to develop rates that meet the cost of providing that service. So in, as we're looking at this, we've got three main parts to it. So we've got how much revenue is it that we need to generate every year in order to sustain the system? The second piece of that is going to be what customers are causing us to incur these costs. And then the third piece is who are we going to then recover those revenues from? So those are the three main pieces of the rate study that we look at here. So in terms of the current rate study process, we've been working with Tina and her staff for a while now to identify the financial plan. That's always the first step for us. So what are our operations and maintenance needs going forward? What does the capital program look like going forward? What do we need to spend, reinvest in the system to maintain the system? We took a look at the rate structure. It was mentioned that 2008 was the last time that a rate study was done in the city of Kingman. We went back and looked at it. So the 2008 study, as best we can tell, was a financial plan update. So when I say financial plan update, that just means the financial plan says we need 5% more revenue. We're going to raise all rates by 5%. So we didn't look at rates back then. So it's even going back before 2008 that we really dug into what the rates themselves were going to be. So we took a look at that to better align with what the city's needs are today. And then we evaluated the cost of providing service. So again, that's going back to who are we going to recover our revenue from? The commercial class, the irrigation class, the residential class. I mentioned this last week, but it's worth bearing repeating again tonight. So a revenue increase is not necessarily the same thing as a rate increase. They're often used interchangeably. I still use them interchangeably, and I've been doing this for 20 years, so... The main point is the revenue increase is how much more revenue do we need to maintain the system? How much more revenue do we need to generate to operate efficiently? So that might be that the financial plan says we need 5% more revenue or we need 10% more revenue to operate the system. A rate increase is how that impacts the individual customer itself. And we'll get into this a little bit more, you'll see some examples. But just because we're generating 5% more revenue doesn't mean that every customer on the system is going to see a 5% increase in their bill. Depending upon the size of their meter, how much water they use, what they, what they use one month versus the next month, their rate increase that they personally experience may or may not be the same as the overall revenue increase. So why increase the water rate revenue? As I said, the last study was back in 2008. We did take a look at this pre-COVID, but then COVID hit, so things got shelved a little bit. So then we went back and took another look at it more recently. So the analysis is telling us that we need additional revenue to meet operational costs. Inflation is high right now, costs are going up. It's not just personal costs are going up, the cost to operate the utility is going up as well. It's not immune to that. We've got repair and maintenance of the system that needs to be done. If you don't maintain the system, it's usually more costly if you have a water main break, the knee-jerk reactive mode as opposed to a proactive mode. So we've got a fairly robust capital program that we've got going forward in order to maintain the systems. We need to increase revenues in order to accommodate that and then meet and maintain targeted reserve levels. So what we've looked at in terms of this is we're looking at a 45-day reserve for the water utility, for the operations utility through 2026, and then it's increasing to 60 days. So what that reserve level means is it's your walking-around money. It's your working capital, your working fund balance. I said this last week, if we lived in a perfect world, the city would send out its bills, we would collect our revenue from the customers, and then we would pay our bills so that we would always have that revenue stream coming in before we had to pay our bills. That's not the world that we operate in. We have to send out some of our bills before we get revenue from our customers. So that 45 to 60 days that we're looking at just ensures that we have some additional money in the bank so that we can meet our needs and pay our bills and be financially prudent going forward. So this is the operating fund financial plan. So this is your rate revenue, your monthly base charge, your volume rate. So this is what's used to pay for chemicals, it's used to pay for power, electricity, staff costs, all that kind of thing. So you can see we've got revenue increases that we're projecting for '24 through fiscal year 2028. Some fairly substantial ones in the early years, and then that tails off. And then if you look at the graph at the bottom there, so the dark blue line is what our target reserve is. So that's that 45 days increasing to 60 days going forward. And then the lighter blue bar is what your actual reserves are, where they're at today and then where they're projected to be. So you can see even with those increases that we have projected going forward, you're drawing down on your fund balance every year until we get to that 2028 period where we've got that appropriate matching between what the revenue needs are and what our reserves are for that year. On the capital renewal fund side, so this is your capital renewal fees. It's a fixed charge that gets assessed to your customers every month. So again, you can see we've got increases proposed fiscal year '24 through 2028, 20% a year for the next five years. And again, even with those 20% increases each year over the next five years, you can see that reserve being drawn down through 2028 to the point where when you're at fiscal year 2028, you've got $750,000 set aside in reserves, which I'm sure Public Works can tell you, their preference would probably be that it be higher than that because if you have a major break, if you have a major issue, that can eat up that fund balance pretty quickly. But we wanted to do the balancing act of what's an appropriate... But we wanted to do the balancing act of what's an appropriate reserve level versus what the impact to our customers is going to be from raising, increasing revenues going forward and raising rates. So, speaking of the capital improvement program, so this is what we have identified through fiscal year 2027. It's about 16.7 million that we've got listed there between the operating fund and the capital renewal fund. So, then we'll shift into some proposed changes to the rate structure. So, right now, your base charge, so that's the monthly fee that you pay every month regardless of whether or not you use any water. If you don't use any water, you pay this fee. If you use 100,000 gallons, you pay that fee. And right now, it's a uniform rate regardless of your meter size, everybody pays the same. So, if you have 5/8 inch meter, you're paying the same monthly base charge as somebody with a 6-inch meter. So, that's contrary to the way the industry is trending towards. The industry is trending towards having a meter size based fixed charge so that a smaller meter pays a less, pays a lower monthly base charge than a larger meter does. There are several reasons for this, one being it costs less to buy a 5/8 inch meter and install it than it does to purchase a 6-inch meter and install it. There's different costs associated with that. The different sized meters have different capacities to it. So, in terms of capacity, they're evaluated on the gallons per minute of water that can flow through a meter. So, a 6-inch meter can push a lot more water through it per minute than a 5/8 inch meter does. So, based on the potential capacity that that customer would need with a 6-inch meter, we're recommending higher base charges for, for larger meters. On the volume rate side, so for residential customers, we're looking at a revised four-tier structure. You've got three tiers right now. We're proposing breaking the first tier into two so that you have more of a lifeline rate for low-income, fixed-income people so that there's a lower rate to benefit them, the lower water users, and then increasing the tiers after that. We also changed the width or the amount of water, if you will, that's allowed in each tier. We'll get to it in a minute. But right now, one of the things that staff wanted to look at was more of a conservation-oriented water rate structure. Conservation is certainly becoming more and more important every day. The width of the tiers that you have right now, they are conservation-oriented to the extent that as you move through the tiers, you pay a higher rate for your water. But there's a lot of water that's being allotted in each of the tiers. So, we wanted to tighten those up a little bit to give you a little bit more water conservation incentive. On the commercial side, we've got a uniform rate that we're recommending. And on the irrigation side, we're proposing to go from the current two tiers to a uniform rate. And on both the commercial and the irrigation, that's more the trend in the industry again is to go to a uniform rate, mostly because of the variability within the customer class itself. So, within the commercial class, and we'll get to this in a minute as well, you've got an office retail customer that uses 4,000 gallons a month. Within that commercial class, you've also got a hospital that's using 2.2 million gallons of water per month. Trying to design a tiered rate structure that is equal for both groups so that you're, you're trying to balance out how much water is in each tier. It's really hard when you've got that much variability within the tier structure. And we'll get into that, like I said, in a minute as well. So, in terms of the monthly base charges, so again, this is how much you pay every month regardless of whether or not you use any water. And this helps provide the city that guaranteed revenue source with, with the, the reserve target being lowered to 45 days and then increasing to 60 days. You're at the low end of the spectrum of what we typically see. So, one of the things that we looked at through the rate structure changes was increasing the amount of revenue that we generate through the base charge. So, these base charges that you're seeing here are intended to generate about 45% of your overall revenue needs. So, that provides a little bit more assurance to Tina and to the financial staff that you are going to have that revenue coming in, that you are going to have the revenue that you need in order to pay your bills. So, that's why you're seeing a fairly decent jump there from the 721 for a 5/8 inch meter now up to 1307 going forward in fiscal year '24. And then, as I discussed, we're recommending that as you get a larger meter, you're paying a higher base charge reflective of the increased cost of the meter and the additional capacity that's associated with those meters. Getting into the usage rates here, so I've got it footnoted there, you can read what your current rates are. At the bottom there, it was just too hard to try and go from a three-tier to a four-tier and get it all nice and one, in one chart. But you can see the, the recommended lifeline rate, the zero to 3,500, and then the tier two, 3,500 to 8,000, 8,000 to 20,000, and over 20,000 versus the current rate structure now where you wouldn't get into that top tier until you hit 45,000 gallons. So, again, this is trying to encourage some conservation with the new rate structure there. You can see what we've got in terms of the commercial and irrigation rates there. So, again, the irrigation going from the two tiers, the zero to 200,000 and greater than 200,000 gallons being collapsed down into a single, into a single tier. The capital renewal fee, so this is taking care of the bulk of your capital costs. Again, the same concept as what we saw on the monthly base charge for the operations fund. Right now, it's a uniform rate regardless of the meter size. We're recommending to go to increasing capital renewal fee based on the, the size of the meter. And then we're going to get into some customer impacts here. So, we've got three different profiles here for you on the, on the residential side. So, a low-volume user at 3,000 gallons, so they would fall within that lifeline rate. The average customer on the system today uses about 6,000 gallons, so we've got the average customer there. And then a high customer at 25,000 gallons. So, then you can see what the current and proposed bill is, and then again, the different percentage there. So, you can see that the percentage revenue increase that we talked about a few slides earlier isn't translating to being exactly the same for each of these customers. Again, based on the size of their meter and the amount of water that they use. On the commercial customer side, so there's that hospital at 2.2 million gallons that I referenced with, with a 6-inch meter. And you can see what their current and proposed bill would be under the new, new uniform rate. And then several other different customers there with the office retail in there as well at 4,000 gallons. On the irrigation side, again, we had the same kind of variability that we saw on the commercial side. You've got a school using 1.2 million gallons a month. And then you've got a medical facility using 17,000 gallons a month. So, you can see what their respective current monthly bill would be and then the proposed bill if they were to switch to the uniform rate that we're recommending. As I alluded to last time and Mr. Foggan addressed as well, everybody wants to know how do we compare to our neighbors? So, we've got that here, but the caveat that we always have to give is the rates that we've designed are based on the costs and the rates and the customer usage patterns for Kingman proper. So, we're providing a comparison here between Kingman and Lake Havasu and Bullhead City. We're not designing rates for Bullhead City, we're not designing rates for Prescott, Prescott or Flagstaff. These are costs specific to the city of Kingman, the usage pattern specific to the city of Kingman. We don't know how much they're reinvesting into their system versus how much Kingman is reinvesting into their system. Do they have the same length of pipes, the same number of miles of pipes? Do they have the same water source? All those different factors go in. So, it's never going to be a complete apples-to-apples comparison, but at the same time, it does provide some context for where you're at. So, you can see where you're at today at 2254. The proposed would be at 2661, so you're still below the average of these entities. And I made the comment last time too, that Lake Havasu City is currently undertaking a rate study right now. So, their rates are going to be going up, and Bullhead City is undertaking one as well. So, theirs will be going up as well for what that's worth. So, with all that said, we did have some other alternative options that we wanted to present to you. So, the first that we're going to look at is a phasing approach. So, we recognize that it's been a long time since we really took a deep dive into the rate structure itself. Pre-2008, it was 2008 was the last time a study was done where the revenue increases were looked at. So, patterns changed over time, usage customers, they all changed over time. So, maybe we want to look at phasing in these rates over time as well as opposed to doing it overnight and trying to minimize the impact to the customers, if you will. So, what we've got here is you're seeing the residential class is not decreasing their rates quite as much as we had previously. And the commercial and irrigation customers are not seeing their rates increase as much as we saw in the previous slides too. So, it's that phasing and trying to balance out and generate the same amount of revenue. But again, this goes back to who are we getting the, the revenues from? Are we getting it from the residential class, the commercial class, or the irrigation? So, this, this first phase in here is trying to balance it out and minimize the impact to the commercial and irrigation customer classes going forward. The second item that we wanted to look at was we understood that, that council wanted us to continue to look at a tiered approach for both commercial and irrigation. So, we have a phase-in option here with, with tiers. So, on the commercial side, we've got the tier one would be 0 to 22,000 gallons and tier two would be greater than 22,000 gallons. When we normally look at a tiered rate structure for the residential class, normally what we'll look at is tier one is based on average winter consumption. So, that's generally domestic water use, washing dishes, doing your laundry, showers, that kind of thing. So, we took the same approach to the commercial and looked at what their average winter consumption was as a class. So, the average winter consumption for the commercial class was 22,000 gallons a month, so that's what we set tier one at. Now, if we go back to the, the previous customer groupings there, so we saw the, the hospital at 2.2 million gallons. So, their 2.2 million gallons a month, they'd have their first 22,000 would be in tier one, and then the other 22, 2.2 million and change would fall into tier two. So, they're effectively still a uniform rate structure because the vast majority of their water use is going to be at that tier two rate. Same thing with that office retail where they were using 4,000 gallons a month. All their 4,000 gallons would fall under that first tier. So, effectively, they would have a uniform rate structure as well. They would be in the first tier and the, the hospital would be in the second tier. It's just the nature of, again, that variability, the, of the types of customers you get within the commercial customer class and trying to come up with a tiered rate structure that fits everyone. And that's not to say that at 4,000 gallons, the office retail is being incredibly conservative and efficient in their water use, and the hospital is wasting water use because they're at 2.2. It's just the nature of the business itself, and they're using the water that they need in order to, to operate. On the irrigation side, so we looked at, again, the two tiers here. So, in the case of the irrigation customer class, we looked at what's the average use of an irrigation customer across the entire year. So, we set that at the tier one rate. When we looked at what the average use was across the year for an irrigation customer, it came in at 90,000 gallons. So, when we looked at how much water is used at the 9, 0 to 90,000 versus over 90,000, it meant that we would be capturing about 10% of our water use in tier one, which didn't make any sense to us to have a tier one rate that only captured 10% of water use. So, we doubled it to 180,000. That got us in about the 25% range of water use in tier one and 75% in tier one. So, that's what we've got reflected for you here. Again, looking at some of those irrigation examples that we had before, the higher water use customers, they're going to blow through that 180,000 gallons within the first few days of the month. So, they're effectively paying a uniform rate, but at the higher tier. And then some of the smaller ones are going to be falling within the first tier, so they will be a uniform rate in the first tier. Again, just the difficulty with the magnitude of the types of customers within these classes. They're not as uniform as residential tends to be. In terms of the customer impacts, taking this into consideration, so on the residential side, so this is a new slide since last week. So, we've got the same three customer profiles there, the low, the average, the high, what their current bill would be, and then what the proposed bill would be, and then what the bill would be under the phase-in. So, that new phase-in bill for residential customers is something that we didn't have for you last week that we wanted to share with you all this week. And then on the commercial side, so again, those same customer profiles there, what their current monthly bill would be, their proposed monthly bill under the phase-in approach, and then what the tiered phase-in approach would be. So, you can see like for the hospital there, the proposed monthly bill, it would be the highest if we jumped right into the, what the cost of service dictates it should be. It comes down a little bit under the phase-in approach. And then the tiered phase-in would be somewhere in between the proposed and the, and the phase-in uniform rate. Same thing on the irrigation customers, so we've got the same customer groupings here. The current monthly bill, the proposed, the phase-in, and then what it would look like under the tiered approach. So, with that, that's the end of the presentation that I have formally, certainly happy to answer questions. The next steps that we're looking at is to adopt the notice of intent and set the public hearing date, which I believe is tentatively planned for June 6th. And then we would have the public hearing and then adopt new rates.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any questions, councilors? Yes, Councilor Saly.
I was disappointed that I was unable to attend the workshop last week, but I did watch the video. And one of the things that I had requested previously was to consider putting in place a rate for industry that would specifically target any high-water users that may want to locate here. I still think that the council should consider this, it was not brought up in the workshop, I don't see it here. But the reason why I think this is important is because the industrial park is located in the county. It's under county regulation. There are private, there's property under private ownership that is for sale. We have no say over who purchases those parcels of land. And if you think about it, 10, 15 years ago, if somebody had come in here and said, "You need to do something to keep corporate farms from coming to town and using up all our water," we would have laughed them out of here. I see this as an opportunity to put a rate in place for industry. I would say over the 2 million mark because we don't have anyone in our industrial park right now anywhere near 2 million gallons a month. And we make the water so unaffordable that we will not have any chance of a high-water user locating here in Kingman sneaking in without, without our approval. So, I would like everyone to consider that. I would be open to even increasing that if, if it made someone feel more comfortable. But I would hate to see down the road, as water resources become more and more scarce, we start seeing industries locate here that are going to use a lot of our water. I don't think there's any corporation, any job, anything that's worth letting somebody come into town and use more water and deplete our aquifer faster. So, in my opinion, because right now, I think the highest user I saw at the industrial park was 1.2 million gallons. If we made it 2 million and we just made it absolutely unaffordable for somebody using that much water or over to locate here, they wouldn't even consider it, and it would never be an issue for us. Given the INA that we had fought so hard to get put in place, this is our opportunity to put another, another safety net around our aquifer. So, I hope that you would all consider that in, in support, putting something like that in place to, to further protect our water.
Thank you, Councilor Saly. Question I've got right away is, for example, the hospital. Would you call them commercial or would you call them industrial?
Well, they're in the city limits, and I would call them commercial.
Commercial, then, okay.
So, I'm really talking about an industrial user, somebody at our industrial park.
So, basically out of city limits.
Out of city limits that, you know, that would relocate here and then use up a ton of our water. So, that's what I'm asking for is to, things that are outside of our, of our control, to just put this in place as a little bit of insurance.
Counsel?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I'm just curious, do we have anything in place that...
I'm just curious, do we have anything in place that detours folks from coming that are high-water users? Isn't that a part of the economic development process?
So we don't have anything in place. We do have a process when we get site selectors. And basically, what we've set as a threshold is anybody that's really asking for, I would say, we talk about this in daily consumption, not in monthly consumption. So anybody that would be looking for something greater than 150,000 gallons a day, we really shy away from, and have actually provided feedback that we're not a place probably that you're looking for because of the amount of water that you're looking to consume. But we have looked at what their prospectus is, number of employees, do they pay higher than the minimum, or minimum, the minimum or the midpoint of Mojave County's pay, which is currently about $54,000. Do they pay higher than that? You know, there's basically a set of criteria that our ED team works with our public works team when they're filling out these perspectives or the site selector sheets. And we certainly have told some folks that this wasn't a good fit for them. So that's done pretty regularly, and we do, you know, we do have a process, but there's no, there's no minimum or maximum water consumption. We do have a threshold where we're probably not very comfortable, and that, anything north of 150,000 gallons a day, 200,000 gallons a day is probably beyond our threshold for comfort unless they could show a real economic benefit to the community and to the area.
So there's really nothing in place other than, I mean, if they really wanted to come in, even though you said there's really not a fit for you, they still could come in?
Well, we still have to agree to serve them water. So I think we still, we still have the power to be able to say, "We can't supply that much water."
Okay. And that's kind of where I'm going. So I want to see if there's something in place that wouldn't be as harsh, but also wouldn't be, you know, someone's opinion, you know, that would detour someone. And then, so there's that part of it that I'm looking for. I'm not opposed to what you propose, but...
And I would just throw out that the site selector is not necessarily, that process isn't going to happen all the time, especially with privately-owned land. Somebody can just buy the land. They don't have to call Economic Development Department.
But what I'm hearing from Manager Foggan is that we don't have to serve them as far as water goes. Is that what I hear you say?
So that is a good question that...
Imagine, I mean, imagine that process. I wouldn't hang my hat on that.
Well, and we're talking about industrial park where we're kind of sold out. We're waiting for 700 acres to release. And, you know, tying to the city services is, still requires them to go through a process to be brought into the system. So there is a process. I wouldn't know or not prepared to share what that process is tonight. I would be happy to have Rob and his team present what that looks like. Happy to do that.
Well, I'm just looking for the safety net that I think Councilor Saly is looking for as well, and what does that look like? So if we have the right to refuse service to anyone that comes in, based off of, you know, once we've done the permitting, as far as the analysis of everything that has to be done for the project, if we still have that authority to be able to do that, that's more of a safety net than what I thought we had. And then my question to you, Kevin, is what does that look, what does an industrial rate look like? Have you seen it? Is it something that is happening in other cities?
It's something that I've seen industrial rates in other cities, but it's usually the reverse of what you're talking about here, in the sense that, generally speaking, an industrial customer, so this goes back to a discussion that we had last week, where I said, "Part of the cost on the system is if the system was sized to use the same amount of water every day, month in, month out, that's an efficient way to run the system. You know how much water is going to go through the pipes every month." That's typically what your industrial customer does. Your industrial customer generally uses the same amount of water every month, day in and day out. So they're usually the cheapest of the customer classes to serve, which means their rates tend to be lower than everybody else's, bearing in mind they use more water than everybody else, but they don't have that peak and valley that really costs to operate the system. Typically, when we see it, we see it as an industrial rate that's lower, not what we're discussing here, where we want to raise it to try and discourage people from, industrial from coming in. It's not to say it can't be done. Given the fact that you're talking about adding a new customer class for water usage that would be above a set level that you're not hitting right now, I don't have anything to tie a rate itself to. So anything that I would be doing would be purely speculative. I mean, I would have to turn to the city attorney to see what his opinion on that was, because if there was a challenge, then, well, what's backing up this data? Well, nothing, because we don't have any of those. So that would make me a little bit nervous doing that, but...
Well, and that was going to be my final question.
Okay.
Then it would be, what is the rate? How do you set that rate? You don't have anything to go off of? Do you look at, you know, other cities that are, have that rate? But then, like you spoke earlier, we're not all made the same.
Correct.
So, yeah, is there a statute that allows us to, you know, we can go only so high? Is it a percentage?
I think there's some concerns about blocking like that actual aspect, and I would be cautious about taking that sort of position. But I would also say that I am by no means an expert on that, not expecting this type of question here tonight. But I would be cautious about setting rates that don't have a factual basis to set them without any continued background information to support that.
So I would be interested in two things. I would be interested in knowing the process for which, if someone were to come, like, what do we go through? Like you said, you'd be happy to talk about that at a later time. And then I'd also like to know how you would approach that. I'm not opposed to it. I get the premise to which you want to do this, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if we already have a procedure in place, and that's how we can, you know, help those people along to another city, then so be it. So...
So since we're in this discussion, I think it's appropriate that we have, Rob is available to be able to speak to what we've been working on. I think this will help in part of the answer to that. So if we can give Rob just a few minutes to talk about what he's been working on, I think this will be helpful.
Okay. Mr. Rowan.
Mayor, counsel, kind of along these lines, what we've been working on is a water service policy, not so much a separate rate, but trying to determine, based upon the size or the amount of water use, when we would tell somebody that we would not be able to serve them. So we've gone through this process, and we've kind of, we've got this draft policy in place. We've got, we've developed this cost-benefit analysis that kind of looks a lot of the benefits like Mr. Foggan had talked about, as far as employment or tax creation, and it kind of ranks those against the amount of water that that prospective user would use. That has not been completed. We do have, we are pretty far along in that process. We've actually got a call scheduled to kind of go through it within the next couple of weeks to see, make sure that we have that kind of buy-in from everybody, because this is, this takes everyone from, you know, economic development, engineering, public works, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. But basically, we would set this level that would be the maximum water user that we would allow, dependent on how they grade out this kind of matrix of, you know, cost of the resource versus benefit of the development. So we are in that process. It does not specifically deal with the separate rates, but it does deal with who we would serve, who we would be able to serve. And I guess the other part of that, too, is it also factors in wastewater quality. Because with some industries, what they're, you know, their wastewater that they're generating is, has different characteristics than, you know, the bulk of the wastewater that we treated to plant. So, you know, it could be that somebody would have to do pre-treatment on their side and also maybe contribute to some additional improvements at the wastewater plant where we were accepting this water from. So...
Mayor, can I just jump in? Just kind of the legal aspect with that is, is the idea is, we have to be careful of being, I'll use the legal term of arbitrary and capricious by setting something just to set it. And that's why we're talking about having some fact-finding, some basic background information that can support that decision, saying, you know, the city has the ability to incorporate this new business or whatever into our operations. So that's why we wanted to be careful about just, I don't like the word knee-jerk, but just this off-the-cuff type of application of some kind of rule.
I have two questions.
Okay, actually, thank you, Mr. Cooper, and thanks, Rob. Councilor Saly, you bring up a good point, especially because there are private lands out there. For example, I know of one, it's a two-acre parcel, has two, 10,000-square-foot buildings on it, there's room to put another 10,000-square-foot building on it. Right now, they probably only have a one-inch service meter. But what happens if a water bottler, I'm just, what if, wants to go into there, they build another 10,000-square-foot building, now they have 30,000 square feet to produce bottled water, they're probably going to use a lot of water. They would, of course, put in an application to increase their meter size to, let's say, a six-inch. Now we're talking lots of water. Of course, does that have to go, doesn't it, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, doesn't it have to go through, like, the application process, they have to go to the MUC, the municipal utilities commission, for approval of that increased water meter? Or how, in other words, what safeguards do we have for something like that not to happen?
Yeah. I mean, I guess I would defer to Phil on the exact procedures there. If it's a new water service to an unsubdivided parcel, it has to go through the utilities commission.
Well, this, these are existing buildings, they already, so...
Yeah, so I'm not exactly sure on the procedure for upsizing a meter that already has water service. These are things that I think we need to, you know, finalize through the kind of this policy and these procedures that we'll be working on.
Councilor Saly, and then Councilor Walker.
So my first question, Rob, is what do you see that cutoff being? How many gallons per month to say, "We're not going to let you locate here, no matter what the community gets out of it?"
Well, and I think that's, you know, Mr. Foggan's mentioned 150,000 gallons a day. Yeah, I think that's a good starting place. But I think some of it, again, is going to depend on kind of the cost-benefit analysis, you know, if there are, and, you know, I mean, there's also the possibility that people are bringing water with them, you know, that, you know, as the water laws are going to change in Arizona, I think, you know, it will be more like maybe what happens with some of the AMAs, where they're bringing paper water or water credits with them somehow, or they could contribute to, you know, building a well or building storage shanks in the system. I think there's a lot of those kind of possibilities in the future.
How long do you think it's going to take to get this put into place?
Well, if we get staff on board, then we can get it scheduled for the utility commission and bring it to council. I think there may be some tweaking on it. It, you know, I've kind of been working on it, but I don't think everybody, everybody else has been, you know, had a chance to get real familiar with it. So it makes sense to me, but there's smarter people here than me, so...
So, I mean, this sounds great. I don't have a warm and fuzzy feeling, just given the question you just asked about upgrading the meter and how do we really stop people? And then there's the question of, so somebody builds out there, and you tell them no, and now they're suing us, and, you know, these kind of things. So that's why I think this rate would help us navigate that.
Well, I would say, just to that comment, to not, sorry to interrupt you, but they would, they would never get to the point of building before we said, "We can't serve you."
Somebody could come in here and build and get their one-inch meter, and then they want to expand, or they want to upgrade, and now we're not, we're not really sure what it takes to upgrade. So you know what I mean? And maybe you're not here anymore, maybe we're not here anymore. So how do we, if now is the time that we could put a rate into place that would protect the future, I think that we should look into that. My second question is for you, Cooper. Wouldn't you feel that the INA, it would be a strong support to doing a rate like this? I mean, we're already saying, no, you cannot expand your farms, or you cannot bring in new farms. Isn't that enough to say, "We're not going to allow large water users to come into our industrial park"?
No. I think those are two separate issues that are, I get that you, that they seem related, but they're unrelated. It could be, you know, a footnote in your study or your proposal that you're going to come to create in order to take the position you want to take. But again, it can't be something that we just do because we want to do it. We need to at least have some factual background to that position, meaning tonight is not the night where you should say, "I want to set a rate of, you know, anything in excess of 3 million gallons a month." It's going to be such a high rate, a high cost, that someone can't come in, because that's not what our study was done. It's not how it was created. So what you do is then you weaken your position at some point. Someone comes in and wants to challenge that. If they say they're going to insist on coming in, "How did you come to these rates?", well, we need to have some kind of background for it, or a policy or some rationale, how we got to that position. And I think that's what Rob's working on. And yeah, you would use, say, the INA. It's a footnote, it's saying, "This is something that the county has taken these steps to address it." But the issue is, what is the city's position on our providing service to whomever?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Saly. Councilor Walker, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have just a few words on this. I would hate to see us lock in as a city that we had such a high rate that we just scared people off to begin with. I think I'd want to see who wants to come here. And I think that's kind of, is that what you're working on? And to see how many employees, what's the base rate? I mean, if they're coming in here with 40 employees and they're going to burn 4 million gallons a month, they're probably not the fit for us. But if they were coming in here and they're bringing 200 employees, and they pay above the standard rate of, what, the 54,000, I mean, that'd be something we might want to look at. Those are some good jobs. But I'd hate to just run people off before we get them here. I mean, let's have a means to vet them, to see what they're doing, you know? And then another comment I have is, I don't think this council can hold a future council. I mean, they could change anything we do.
That's true.
So, I mean, I think we need to be reasonable about it. I think we need to vet who's coming in and see, you know, okay, you want to use that much water? How many people are you bringing? You know, how many new hires do we have here? And what's your rate of pay? I think, you know, we do need to look at that, versus just putting a high rate that we're just, we don't want to even talk to you guys, because we could be missing out some good businesses wanting to come here.
Good comment. Okay. Vice Mayor.
I'm very comfortable that you brought that forward. So I'm more comfortable moving this item forward, knowing that that's coming along. So it's going to go to MUC, and then it's going to come before council, the policy.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll have a chance to make sure that everything is in it that we would like to see and make sure, I think we've given you some good information to take back, to help create that policy. So I'm more comfortable moving this item forward, knowing that that is coming right behind it, as long as it, you know, is moving along. That's my thoughts. So, thank you.
Councilor Savage.
Always like numbers. There's a big difference between 2 million gallons a month and 150,000 gallons a day. That's 4,500 gallons a month. I just want to make that point. gallons a day. That's 4,500 gallons a month. I just want to make that point. That's a lot of water for someone to do 150,000 gallons a day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, all of you, for your comments. Um, are there any other, as far as item 4A, any other comments that need to be shared? Okay, thank you, Rob. Or, for Kevin, since he has stepped back up, are there any more comments or questions for him?
So, will you, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
We still will be able to go through the public process, and then we will be able to decide as a council whether we want to do the fear, uh, the fear, the phased-in or just the rate.
Correct, yes. And Tina and I are working on producing a bill calculator, for lack of a better term, so that customers can enter their usage and see what their bill would be under their current rate structure and their proposed rates, as opposed to just the profiles that I had for you tonight, yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion then for item 4A, adopt a notice of intent to modify water rates and set a public hearing date, and of course, that date as staff has recommended for June 6, 2023?
Some of.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item 5A, department reports, financial transparency report.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. One of, uh, one of the great things that we've done over the last year, I think it's over the last year anyway.
June.
Yeah, um, has been to introduce a transparency portal that we don't really, in talking with Tina, didn't feel like too many people knew about. And so, in an effort to shine some light on this, to be transparent, um, Tina wanted to walk you through and show you what it looked like and why it's so important. It's, it's actually one of those things that we have started to show to those people participating in Citizen Academy, as a matter of fact. And they've been, they've been wowed by it, and we think others that are of interest, particular interest in how the city's spending their money, really, uh, would like this. It's really easy to navigate, and I'll turn it over to Tina to show you that. Ms. Tina.
Thank you, Mr. Foggins. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. So, I'll start with our department, meaning the finance department's mission statement, which is to safeguard public assets. It is to maintain the city's financial integrity and to provide outstanding customer service. Additionally, as part of the strategic plan, the council's priority is to improve the accessibility of information. And one way to meet our mission statement and to meet your priority is to provide financial transparency. And that's exactly what this portal does this evening. And so, this gives you a resource as citizens approach you about spending and revenues directly. You can give them at their fingertips a place for them to find that information, um, and for you to find that information as you get questions, if you so desire. So, I'm just going to give you a quick tour of the information that's out there and really how easy it is to navigate. And so, it is on the City of Kingman's website. And when you go to the finances homepage, which is under government and finance, it is the first option on our toolbar on the left-hand side, and it's called Open Finance. And so, this is the homepage of Open Finance. And so, we have a couple of options up here in the menu. That's budget. We can look at revenues. We can look at our operating budget. We can actually dive into our checkbook. And so, you can actually see individual and specific transactions to vendors, dollar amounts, dates, check numbers. You can see all of the data. The portal, it actually integrates with our financial reporting system and does so on a daily basis. So, everything is as current as it is that we're entering into our system. You can actually dive into the payroll too, not specific salaries per, uh, per employee, but what we're paying for in departments, uh, as far as salaries, certification pay, ASRS, state retirement, all of the different, um, benefits as well, taxes. Then we have in here some common questions. And some of these common questions, one of the most common question is total local sales tax that we collect. So, that's one of the common questions. We can also search for things like, hey, I want to learn something about, um, parks and what parks is spending. And you can type in parks here, and several different options will populate, and you can choose those. Also, we have some widgets here where you can dive in to the revenue budget or our operating budget. And again, the checkbook and the payroll. But we also have some quick, uh, some quick, some, uh, quick options for you to dive into the general fund and our capital projects as well. So, let's just start at the common questions. I'm going to take you up to one of those common questions. And we are going to dive in to the one that talks about local, total local sales tax collected. So, when I click on that, where does it take me? So, the first thing we want to do, and first thing I want to share, is that we have three prior years of historical data, as well as the current fiscal year. So, we can certainly compare year over year, or citizens can compare over year. So, we're going, year over year. So, we're going to change that to 2023. We've got our revised budget or our estimates for the current fiscal year and what our actual number is. And you can see here what that total is, and it gives it to you in a bar chart format. But it also gives you it in a table format, e- easy to read. So, we're estimating that we're going to collect $30.1 million in total sales tax, and year-to-date, we're at 22.4 million. So, again, easy to read. To get back to the Open Finance homepage, you just click on that left-hand toolbar. And, again, we can type in parks, but I'm going to come down here actually and dive into capital projects. That's also something that is of interest. And so, we get, uh, just a summary of all of the capital projects in 2023, so $164 million that has been budgeted. We've got our top five projects here, but let's dive in and see all of our capital projects. So, we've got the names of our projects. That's how we sort them in our financial system. We've got the budget, again, let me do actual here. We've got the budget for each of those projects and any actuals that have been spent, sure, uh, for each of those projects. Now, this is the, this is about 15 of them that show up here on the actual chart form, but down below, you will see every single project that's been budgeted. Additionally, if you chose to, on any of these screens, you can actually download all of the information, and then it'll go into an Excel table. You can sort, you can look at all of the details if you choose to do so. So, let's dive into the electric car museum as an, as a, as an example. And we can see that we budgeted, uh, close to $5 million this year. And what we've spent year-to-date is just at about $140,000. We can also see what we've spent on this particular project over time, or at least since the data has been stored in the portal, which is the last three previous fiscal years. So, let's look at that. And I just want to do a total. And we can see here that in 2022, spent, come on, show me, oh, there it is. Oops, I need the actual, sorry about that. There we go. So, in 2022, we spent $878,000. That was for the building itself, and year-to-date, we are here. So, again, just an easy tool to be, for our citizens to dive into and really drill in and get the information, um, that they need for anything. And again, daily transactions and looking at our vendors. So, hopefully, this will provide you with a tool to provide to the citizens. And we did get asked some questions at the Citizens Academy when we shared this about, well, what is your total sales tax? And we were able to say, well, here's the tool for you to go find all of that information. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share that with you tonight. It's just some good news, and we wanted to make sure to highlight that, um, for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And of course, what an amazing tool. And transparency, yes. It's huge.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate all your work on that. Uh, council, any questions for Ms. Maline?
I just had a question, Ms. Maline. Um, on the revenue, can you click into the revenue and see how it, where are revenues coming from? Sales tax?
Absolutely.
All those, so people, the citizens can see what revenues we actually are getting from where?
They can do it citywide. They can break down by fund, and then we'll see all of it. How much sales tax goes into the general fund, how much we've collected over time through, through the, uh, month-to-date, if they'd like, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And of course, the biggest problem is encouraging everybody to use the website, to use it.
That is true.
If they want the information, it is there and available.
Can I clarify one thing? I don't know if you've met specifically where the revenue's from, like, what business? Okay. Because it couldn't come from the specific business, just, okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to, uh, department reports 5B, Take Me Home program.
Yeah, this, uh, this was, this specific item was requested by Counselor Staley, so I'll let her introduce, uh, our speaker and the subject.
Thank you. Um, I, this is Brandon Turner, and, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Tom Blum.
Tom Blum. They are from, from the Mojave County Search and Rescue Organization. And, uh, Mr. Turner approached me about this program that they are working on, and it, it sounds like something that's, um, very much needed in our area. And so, I, um, offered to let him come to the council meeting so that he could tell us about it, and we could help spread the word, um, because this is going to be very helpful to, um, we, I mean, we constantly are seeing more and more people that are lost. There was just one the other day in Yucca, and this is, this is going to help them. So, uh, Mr. Turner, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and council members. Uh, yeah, I'm Brandon. This is Tom. Uh, we've been doing the public outreach on this. This is a commu-, uh, county-wide program. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I'll just get started here, and we'll, uh, see if we got any questions. So, they put a lot of tongue-twisters in here for me. Okay. History, searches for those who wander have increased dementia, autism, uh, brain injuries, just to name a few. Uh, oftentimes, caretakers don't readily have current photos or descriptions available. Um, old photos, no photos.
Brandon, I need you to, yeah.
Little, okay. I'll have to try to, let's see here. Okay, old photos, no photos, or one from a driver's license, which are often outdated. Uh, the interview process can take time. Uh, there's a lot of variables that go into establishing a search area and getting the right resources involved, and, uh, constantly seeking newer tools to assist searches. Um, in 2018, uh, Mojave County Search and Rescue initiated bringing the Take Me Home program to Kingman, or, I'm sorry, to Mojave County. Um, the program is for people who may need special assistance in times of emergency. Uh, voluntary service that gives law enforcement the ability to access information about a child or dependent with a, this is, this is a lot of syllables, with a communicative disability and to provide immediate care based on the information provided by the family member or legal guardian. It is aimed at those individuals that tend to be at risk for wandering with autism, Down syndrome, or other developmental or cognitive disabilities. Uh, it is also available to assist senior citizens who have Alzheimer's or other forms of dementia. Um, the development in 2018, they began to research, uh, on requirements to establish the Take Me Home program in this county. Uh, the IT department took lead in developing, developing a system that would work with our existing county resources. And in spring 2022, a beta version was released with IT, and SAR working together to bring it online. And in August 22, uh, we got the version you see now, which is the live version. And so, this is what we're here to promote tonight. This is the website here. Um, it's available to any resident in Mojave County that may have trouble communicating. Um, there's a list of, uh, you know, any multiple reasons there may be the case. Uh, it works best from a cell phone or tablet, but it can be done from a computer. Um, and we've been working with law enforcement to get the word out there about this, or they're aware of it. Um, and this is what we're doing now. We're just getting the word out there. Um, program is a standard user interface. It's a form-based completion, so you'll be given forms as you go along, uh, which I've got some slides here. Uh, menu selection, and then free text to enter some specific details, which I'll kind of go into. Uh, there's no charge for citizens to enroll, enroll anybody. Um, there is a responsibility and a commitment to keep it current. So, we try to ask people that if you're entering somebody in there, uh, try to revisit it at least once a year for a photo. Um, you know, shoe sizes change, things like that. Um, let's see, we require anybody that's enrolling an individual to be a, a family member or the legal guardian. Um, the information is placed in a database maintained by the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. It's secure and only used to help identify or locate an individual and bring them home safely. Uh, it's not shared and only accessed by law enforcement in the event of an emergency. Um, so here's the, the main form here. Uh, create a user account. You need an email address. Uh, let's see, create an account. Uh, details include height, weight, other identifying information, current photo, and emergency contact info. Um, so as you'll see here, uh, you take a picture of yourself, and, uh, it actually has facial recognition, which I'll kind of go into later. Um, but you'll go through the different fields here to enter in all this information that we'll need. Um, and you can see all your tabs here at the top. Um, and then it's got some blocks here, uh, for additional things. And that's where we really ask that, um, this is more for like our tracking teams and stuff. So, shoe size, or if they have, uh, a particular type of shoe that they always wear, the same brand, maybe, uh, we need that. Um, if they have habit, habits of maybe wearing shoes on opposite feet, which is sometimes the case, uh, we need to know things like that, if they're toe walkers, uh, those sorts of things, uh, mostly in, in those blocks. Um, let's see, photo guidelines for best results, uh, full face, front view, open eyes, um, full head from the top, uh, of the hair to the shoulders. Um, uh, photo taken best in plain white or off background, and avoid shadows on the face, because like I said, it does the facial recognition. Um, it's got contact information here. Um, let's see. So, in the field, this is how this really helps us. Encountering a person that's unable to communicate, law enforcement can come up and take a photo of the individual in Mojave County. If they're in this program, they were, they're, were to take them home, pops right up. Um, in the event that we are responding to a missing person, um, it's up-to-date stuff to get into the field, uh, out to us that are searching and tracking. So, it's, it's really, it saves a lot of time. Um, then it just here, somebody goes missing, call 911, and questions?
That's it.
That's it.
Any questions or comments, or have you heard about this program before?
We have not.
It is fairly new. We're trying to get out to the public.
Sir, if you'll get the microphone so that people online can hear you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They couldn't hear you, Tom.
No, this is pretty, uh, pretty new program. We're trying to get it out to the community. We're trying to touch bases with all these clubs and organizations here in town to help get the word out and, uh, get these pamphlets, uh, taken out and handed out for the individuals that could use them the most. Any questions or comments?
Counselors?
I just want to thank you for coming today and sharing this information. I can see how it would be extremely helpful if you have a family member who might be prone to wandering or getting lost, not being confused, not being able to communicate where they are, and, and this would allow them to get home, uh, safely. So, thank you so much for doing this.
Yeah, this came about from some of our own volunteers making their own database for repeat searches. So, it's, you would be surprised. It, it happens a lot. So, uh, yeah, it's a really good resource. It could save really precious time. So, yeah, thanks, guys, for having us.
Mayor.
Brandon, yes, Vice Mayor.
Oh, I just wanted to put it out there publicly. Thank you. You guys, uh, are doing such good work out there in finding people. So, I, I appreciate all the hard work. I know you guys train continuously. So, I appreciate the, uh, time that you put in to help keep our citizens safe, especially when they go missing, to go and find them. So, I appreciate all the work that you do.
No problem. Thank you.
Hope you're not done yet.
Hang on.
Counselor Savage. Um, how do we get ahold of you? Because I, uh, interact with a lot of senior citizens, and I have a venue that would be great for you to come, bring your message out.
Yeah, I'll email you directly, and we'll set something up.
Okay, thank you. Good presentation. Glad to hear about it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Brandon, Tom, once again, this is a great, this is a great program. I'm excited. And Counselor Staley too, thanks for bringing this to council.
Mayor, I'd like to add too, just thank you guys for all you do. I know almost all you guys are volunteers.
We are.
We're all volunteers, yes. And there's not a whole lot of funding for, I hear?
No, we do our own fundraising as well, yeah.
So, yeah, we appreciate all you do.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
And if I remember right, um, previous Counselor David Waite is on, on Search and Rescue also, right?
Yep, yep.
He volunteers.
We know David pretty well.
Yes. So, I know he enjoys doing that. So, once again, keep up the good work and be safe as always.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 5C, emergency prepared. Item 5C, Emergency Preparedness Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we've had a number of incidents over the last few months where we thought that probably a good opportunity to share with you how, how prepared we really are. It's not something that gets talked about a lot until there's a major snowstorm, or maybe some train cars come off the rails, and then, then everybody is concerned, or a major accident on the freeway. And so Chief Jaeger and I were talking, we, we, we know what we're doing in-house and all the training. You, you see that in the weekly reports that I send out, but a lot of that isn't understood. And so what I've asked Chief Jaeger to do is really walk you through what our, our emergency preparedness looks like, what we've been doing, and the fact that people can take comfort in the fact that there is a lot of work, great equipment, and good people standing by and ready to move forward on any emergency. And we, we don't, we don't talk about one specific type of emergency. We are all hazards-prepared. So Chief Jaeger, please.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you for having me. When he told me I was going to do this presentation, I said, "Great, I have 45 minutes." And he said, "No, you have about 10 to 15." So there's a lot of information. I'm positive I'm going to miss some things, so if there's any thing you would like me to follow up on, just please let me know. I think the big thing, as, as Manager Foggan said, was we're, we plan for all hazard. I know lately it's been with the national incidents, and then most recent local with train derailments, that seemed, that was the, the big one that come up, or, you know, are we prepared for that? And so we want to make it clear that we plan for every incident that we can think of, and then some. And so as you go forward, or as we go forward, so we're going to, I'll do a brief introduction here, and then emergency management process, kind of what we do and who we work with, and then what our response planning entails, and then our actual response capabilities. So again, emergency, it's unexpected condition requiring specific action plans. I won't spend a lot of time on these. And then just the definition of a disaster, and then what the emergencies are that we plan for, some of them. This, this is by no means all of them, but this is more specific to our area, that in our plans, we identify these. And natural disasters, obviously biological drought, dust, sandstorms, earthquakes, extreme heat or cold, fire, flooding, lightning, snow, ice, or hail, tornadoes, slight microbursts, and windstorm events. And then technological events, aircraft crashes, structural collapse, business interruptions, communications, dam or levee failure. Believe it or not, we're part of the, the dam levee response for Davis Dam. We're, we're part of their plan. Explosions, fire, financial collapse, fuel resource shortages, and then hazardous materials, power utility failure, radiological and nuclear accidents, transportation accidents. And then certain, certainly human-caused emergencies, arson, civil unrest, economic enemy attack, hostage situations, mass hysteria, sabotage, special events, terrorism, and workplace violence. You can see with some of these, obviously I'm the fire chief in front of you, I'm really not going to deal with hostage situations. So a lot of the agencies have their own internal plans that are part of these master plans that we deal with. We will work in conjunction with them as part of the master plan and the unified command to make sure that the incident is managed well. So the emergency management process, obviously preparedness, that's making sure we have emergency response plans. We do training and exercises, and we do community outreach, and I'll break those down a little bit as we move forward. Then the response, that's the life-saving, the incident stabilization, property preservation, evacuation, or mass care. And then the recovery phase, which is more of the management, that, that's where the city manager and a lot of the department heads, and as well as you as, as city counselors that are involved in that, and that's the economic recovery, the debris management, housing, health, and social services. And then certainly the mitigation, public education, hazard assessments, and infrastructure improvements. So all of this comprised makes up the emergency management or emergency planning. Some of our partnerships that we have in our all-risk preparedness. And we sit on numerous of these councils and committees. It's not just me. It's also our law enforcement partners, Public Works. And again, pretty much every department within the city has a representative that's involved with the emergency management process. So Mojave County Local Emergency Planning Committee, the LEPC, they're the main hazard mitigation group that's, that, that looks at the plans, puts the plans together, and we're part of that. We currently have a vice chair seat on that committee, so we have a lot of input. The Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADEQ, we work with them a lot. They provide us a lot of grants. When we're talking for gas monitors, hazardous materials, some of that stuff, we work with them. And then certainly the Arizona Department of Emergency Management, again, they're the main emergency management agency for the state, and we work very close with them when we have incidents. Arizona Fire Chiefs Association, this group specifically, obviously on the fire side, they handle the statewide mutual aid contract. We're part of that. That way, if we have an event here and we need to call up resources that we, we don't have enough at the county level, we reach out to them, and then we would get units from Phoenix Flagstaff, or more specific units that we would need if we had a major hazmat incident. They would be able to provide us crews, and we're part of those agreements. With that, I'm, I'm the regional director for the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association, so that makes our city a Kingman Fire Chief, not my name, but that position is the regional coordinator for statewide emergency response. So if other agencies in our region have a need, they contact our dispatch, they contact me, and then I get, get the requests, requests started on that. And then our, our 911 center is the Western Region 911 Center for Statewide Mutual Aid. So the Mojave County Fire Officers, that is our Mojave County Mutual Aid Compact. So that's the one that we're, we are involved in at the county level. If we need resources, we just request them, and they, they will show up if they're available. And that, that, we just updated that plan as well. And then the Western Region RAC, or the Homeland Security Council, that's a group that we're very active with. They provide us with grants, training, and also the information sharing when it comes to the terrorism side of the, of the homeland security piece. Primarily that goes through our law enforcement at the city. And then we're also part of the Mojave County Communication Group. This, these are the plans, and I won't break down each one of them. That is the communication plan for Mojave County in the event that we have an emergency situation where we need, we need to look at backup power, or different frequencies, or even just bringing in some portable systems if our system goes down. And we plan and prepare for that of our site going down, and we have backups to be able to make sure that we're covered moving forward. Some of the training, again, the majority of city staff were, were currently certified. Due to transitions and new folks coming in, we're constantly training. And that's all the instant command training, all the NIMS training, the National Incident Management System training. All our employees go through this training, and I say all the employees, it's not fire, it's city employees. We have a lot of city staff that are ICS-trained to work in an emergency operations center, which we have, which is managed by the police department, and so they train in that. EOC Operations Management, all of our upper management or our executive staff are all trained in EOC operations, so they can function in that capacity. And then all of our line supervisors, all the battalion chiefs, captains, the supervisors at the lower level are all trained in the ICS EOC interface. When we have an incident, it's the folks on the ground that are running the incident. The Emergency Operations Center supports those folks with needs to make sure that they have the tools and equipment that they need to run the incident. So that's, that's our job. We certainly train a lot annually with KRM-C. For those of you that don't know, they actually, because of the hazardous materials potential that's in our area, they actually have a hazardous materials decontamination unit that is set up when we, or if we have to take patients there. So we annually train with them on that, as well as mass casualty. If you'll remember, we just did a big drill with them. And then we have another drill coming up, sorry, another drill coming up as well. And then certainly our drone response, that's been very active lately, whether it's search and rescue, the hazmat derailment, or the train derailment, not hazmat, that we responded to. We were able to quickly identify that real quick, that it wasn't an incident, so we did not have to put hazmat techs in suits and send them in to manually, we were able to fly the drone in, test, do what we needed to do, and we were done with the call. More specifically, the one at the industrial park, we were done with that call in about 15 minutes compared to normally two hours. So great, this is the reason we got the drones, and so it's, it's working. Hazardous materials response obviously is a big part of the fire department. We train and partner with BNSF, and then the National Guard, the 91st Response Team, which is a hazardous, it's an all-hazard homeland security response team that we train with, and you'll see a few pictures. We train with them a couple of times a year. One of the trainings is a lighter training. It's usually going over detectors and things like that. And then we do a drill with them to where they actually come out to our training grounds, and our, our folks play with their toys, and they play with our toys, and we train together, so that works very well. And then certainly Red Cross. We have a, a big involvement with Red Cross. We have predetermined shelter sites, evacuation sites, cooling centers located throughout the city, that during the hotter months, we, we actually provide city staff, Public Works. We all provide ice and water and fans, and those are the some, some of the things that we plan for. So it's not just train derailments. It's also those, those other incidents that we plan for. And then in the LEPC, we do annual drills. That's our Walupi Mountain Fire Plan. We do that annually. We're part of that response up there for a large-scale incident, so we do that every year. We have our Swiftwater Rescue Plan that we do every year, and then the, we're part of the Active Shooter Rescue Task Force that we do every year. And then, not just major events, we also plan for some of the smaller special events. That's our rallies that we have in town. That's the street drags that are getting ready to happen. We're currently having meetings for those, and that, again, involves every department within the city. We meet, make sure that our safety issues and concerns are taken care of, and we plan for them. This year, we're doing a mock mass casualty drill at the same time prior to the event. Just because of the scope and size of the event, we want to be prepared if something happened, and so we're doing that as well. And then certainly parades. Even though they don't seem like much, we still plan for incidents that could happen. And then some of the equipment that we have, that you've provided us, is this is our heavy rescue. They, they've got some of the equipment out there, but this is our technical rescue team. This is all the Swiftwater, the rope rescue that can find space. That's all carried on this apparatus, which is housed right here at the station, right outside. And then each unit, we were able to get a grant. I was able to get that grant a couple of years ago, but we equipped every fire vehicle, including chief's vehicles in the city limits with ballistic gear for the actor. And then all employees had to go through active shooter training, and then we're part of a rescue task force team. We train with local PD. And we're getting ready to do that again, as a refresher training. So this equipment is carried on, on every fire engine, and including all the vehicles, and hopefully we never, ever have to pull it out. This is our mass casualty kits that we carry on the engines. This is triage tags. It's also the command functions, positioning tasks, that we can assign when we get there, if we're on a major incident. This, again, these are, these are carried in all the chief's vehicles. And then certainly our hazmat team. I'm showing you just a piece of it. There's a lot more equipment involved. We just recently had three more graduates, hazmat technicians, so we're doing very well, and we're hoping to get a few more. This was the hazmat grants that Chief Flanagan was able to obtain. For the next three years, we have funding to train our hazmat techs for free, and that's new tech certification. So they go to Pueblo, Colorado, and they're gone for two weeks and come back trained, so. This is the picture of the 91st. Again, that's the National Guard unit. They, of course, they have, you know, federal funds, so they've got some really nice toys. But again, we're able to share our, our toys and resources. The last event we had was a lot of fun, because they don't have drones, and so they were really interested in our drone capability, and so we were able to train some of their folks on the drones. So, again, it's just showing that we, we are reaching out even at the federal level. We have partnerships that we train with annually to support us here at home. Again, a few more pictures. This was a part, again, training with them. These are, are a couple of our folks in suits. We put them through scenarios. We actually have some training chemicals, and they have to go in and find them, test them, and be able to mitigate the issue. And this is an ongoing refresher that they have to do every year. And certainly our, our drone program. So again, there's a lot more to this. I, I would love to go on and, and give a full view. I just want to, again, this is not just the fire department. This is the city as a whole. We, we really put a lot into this, including when we have the little potential snow event that comes in. We're on the phone with the weather service. We're doing Zoom meetings. We're talking roads. We're all working together as depart, in our department to make sure that our city is covered. And then certainly having a certified emergency manager as your city manager helps us greatly when we ask him to move forward with certain plans and things, so, because he's already aware of it. So, again, that's all I have. Any questions? I guess you look like you want to say something? Okay.
Counsel? Any questions for Chief Jaeger? Chief, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Item 5D, Trailer Street Parking Regulations.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of, I believe it was a comment from our council meeting from a citizen, I want to say two or three meetings ago, there was a request to relook at our, you know, the trailer, street parking for trailers and boats and kind of, those kind of things. And so in talking with the chief, with Chief Cooper, we just felt like we haven't had a lot of complaints with regards to our enforcement and having this rule or ordinance in place. And so we thought probably what would be the best thing to do is just share what our experience has been, and have Chief Cooper walk through what the, really what the rules are, and what they're seeing from code services or neighborhood services side of things, so, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, council, happy to be before you. It's very good thing between you and going home. So the, this ordinance was a, put in place in October of 2018, and it was at the council's desire at that time. So I'm going to preface and, which one, Danny? Annie? Ann? There it is. Someone did it for me. Thank you. I'm sure that's Aaron there helping me out. So Community Municipal Code 7-77.1 covers RVs, trailers, and boats. So I'm going to use the term trailer, and so when I say trailer, it applies to all of those things. So, and I'm going to paraphrase. You have those in front of you. I'm not going to read the entire thing. But starting with that subsection A, trailers shall not be parked, stored, or located in any portion of a street or roadway that is in front of a primary residential structure for more than 72 hours. B, the trailer must not be located on any residentially zoned lot that has, does not have a structure on it. So that basically means you can't put your trailer that's in a residential neighborhood on a vacant lot. And then C, the trailer can be stored on developed properties as described in section, and it goes to a zoning ordinance, which is this one. So, and I don't want to get into this entire thing, but in this, this ordinance, it describes how a trailer can be parked. And it can be parked anywhere in the front of the property if that piece of property is like a driveway or is established for parking. It can be parked on the side of the house, if it's behind the front. be parked on the side of the house, if it's behind the, the front edge of your home. It can be parked in the backyard of the house if it's behind restrictive fencing, and there's, there's some restrictions there. So it is somewhat confusing. So in twenty eighteen when we, it also says no overnight parking, no living in your trailers. And that's things that comes up as well, as far as the travel trailers. So, to make it simpler, we handed, we created this brochure in twenty eighteen to help out with people's understanding of the, of the rules in regards to this code. So, um, it's, it's pretty useful. It's been effective. So where this comes in handy and how we provide enforcement actions is if, if there's a violation or someone, a complaint is received, we call this a door hanger. So this will hang on the door or attach to that with the, uh, code enforcement officer, police officer's information. And then it provides them, uh, with the information, and it's a gentle nudge to gain compliance. And I will say this, since twenty eighteen, there's been no charges. Nobody's been charged with this. Everything is, is worked out well and peacefully and with cooperation. And that's how that's happened. I don't know how many of these we do every year. I wasn't able to pull up those numbers, but I know there is multiples that we deal with every year. Um, some of them you, you're familiar with in your neighborhoods, and we've dealt with them. Uh, some of the people are pretty savvy, and they're able to move the vehicle around a little bit, so that it's not in one position for seventy-two hours. But it's something that we do work at. So, um, again, just to repeat, this was something that the council initiated in twenty eighteen, and, uh, it was brought up at a council meeting beginning of last month as well. So, and that's it.
Chief Cooper, we appreciate the report. Counselors, any questions for, for Chief Cooper? Yes, Counselor Saly.
I think the, the person that was here that had the, uh, little flatbed trailer, so he wanted to park it in front of his house, and it was like a dirt space between, it was like the right-of-way between the street-
That's roadway.
-and his front yard. That is the roadway. Even though it's not paved-
Correct.
-we still consider it the roadway.
Yeah, it's right-of-way roadway.
It's not like a parking?
You have to allow people to be able to walk, any vehicle, not just trailers. But you have, you have to be able to walk around and not into the street, whether it's a car or trailer, so.
That makes sense. Okay. I think that was the only thing, is, is it just seemed like maybe a gray area to some people because it was-
Right.
-dirt. Okay.
I will add that any violation, though, is a civil, it's a civil offense, and the, some people ask that, what's the violation for? But we've never charged anybody, which is, I'm pleased.
And once again, that trailer or vehicle, whether it's a utility vehicle, RV, whatever, can only be there for seventy-two hours.
Correct.
Correct.
And there's a length, it's twenty-two feet.
Okay.
Anything over that, brother?
So, I have a question, Mayor?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor.
So, if it's in their, if it's in their front yard, like, let's say they have a, they have a driveway, or let's say they have a circular driveway, and they pull a trailer in there, and you can clearly see it's plugged in, the sides are popped out, and it's there for a few, is that considered a violation?
Well, you're alleging two things. Is it parked properly? And the answer is yes.
Okay.
Can someone live in it and sleep in it? No. Can they use it through the day to go in there and do work and use as a thing? Yes, they can.
Okay. All right.
I'm alluding to what, what has been brought up with some of those as they come up. So-
Yeah, because-
The challenge is to determine if someone's living.
I, I see them. They exist. Thanks.
Okay.
I have one question, Counselor. Um, parking area design standards, are those listed in here?
Where did you read that?
Um-
Oh, right there, yeah.
Yeah, number B.
Yep.
So that is these, that's where, that's referring to the zoning ordinance?
So is that a gravel front yard? They can put a trailer in the front, or is that need to be-
Well, if it's an area for, if it's concrete driveway, or if it's an area that's improved for parking.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for the definition of. What's improved? Is it gravel? Is it?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have dealt with that, and it's specifically designed for parking.
Other cities, Chandler, um, I know you cannot park on gravel. That's why I was like, do we have that? Is that what this is saying? Or gravel's okay?
It's great.
I, I believe, uh, that in, when the council passes, that any improvement, what they were looking for, it, or to stop, is just putting it onto lawn or just straight dirt. So if you brought in gravel-
Gravel, you're okay.
Mm-hmm.
That answers my question.
Okay. Uh, seeing no other questions? Once again, Chief Cooper, we appreciate all you do and your, and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan?
Uh, yes, uh, just, uh, it's, we're gonna hit a warming season. I, I believe it. And, yeah. And so there, just start watching for a whole bunch of great events that are, um, upon us in the next couple of months. I think there was actually a food truck event that started, kinda kicked us off for the, this year in March, and it's just gonna be a whole bunch of great events moving forward. I would just tell you to continue to watch your calendars for those. Um, but First Friday, um, is returning, um, after, um, starts and stops, and we're calling it our First Friday Event. Uh, Chamber of Commerce is putting that on, and they're doing a hopping and shopping event for Friday. So it's four, seven downtown at four, starting at four PM. So excited to have First Friday back. Um, then I wanna just be able to point out the family campout activity that our parks and rec folks have been working on. A fun event for four fifteen. If you want more information, go to their website. I don't have any more than that. And then, uh, finally, just a reminder, the Tri-City Council Meeting is scheduled for, uh, four nineteen. It'll be at ten AM in Bullhead, uh, at their, um, council chambers in Bullhead at ten AM. So, um, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Saly? Okay. Counselor Saly, Vice Mayor. Okay. Um, once again, I did want to encourage everybody, and we've talked about it, it was brought up. Visit the city website. There are so many things you can find out on the city website, um, if you just play around on it. And, uh, and there's a lot of information on the agendas, for example. A lot of people still wonder what is on the agenda that, for this city council meeting. Um, you can go there and you'll see the full-blown report on it, and it's, it's very informative. Um, I don't really have anything else. Once again, appreciate all of you being here tonight, um, and all those who might be viewing online, too. Counsel, I mean, item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Counsel? Uh, Manager Foggan, I have one, and actually, it pertains to actually a phone call that I received today. They would, uh, can we get an update on our vagrancy program, our signage that we were looking at a couple of months ago about possible, um, anyway, along those lines?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, and I don't think anybody's gonna argue with me, this meeting is adjourned.